Hi. All right, everybody rise.
Pardon me. This is the flag of the United States of America. In the republic which stands one nation under God, in the years of the urgent justice law.
Madam Auditor, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilor Reavis.
Here.
Councilor Bozak.
Who is it?
Councilor Brickner.
Here.
Councilor Grant.
Here. There. Project. I can get a comment for it.
All right. New faces, same place, right? Um, we got approval of regular council meeting minutes for October twentieth, twenty twenty, November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Budget meeting, budget minutes, final reading of October fifteenth.
We'll make the motion.
Second.
Twenty. Motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? All in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Election of Officers.
Yes.
Ms. Harold?
What's that?
Is, is he supposed to run it?
Nope.
Don't be nasty.
What's that?
I thought he did. Oh, okay. That's my thing.
I don't think it's, I, I suspect I'm getting to, uh, but it's.
No, I think we're good.
Okay, I nominate Jeremy Reas for President and Mike Jensen for Vice President.
Second.
(laughing).
My name's Mike Jensen.
He's a gentleman guy. He's never gonna say that.
Yeah, he's never gonna say that. What happened, you want to ask?
All right, there's, so there's a, for President, there's one on the floor and for Vice President, we can do them simultaneously, if that's fine. Is there any other nominations for President and Vice President? Any other nominations? Any other? All right, we'll close that off. I, I'm, need to do voice vote on that.
I would do a, I would do a roll call.
All right, we'll do a roll call for President and Vice President.
Councilor Bozak.
Yes.
Councilor Brickner.
Yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yeah.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Papera.
Yes.
Councilor Sten.
Yes.
And Councilor Reavis.
Yes. Thank you for your confidence, Greg.
Yeah, he was very good.
Thank you, guys, for the confidence for another year. I know twenty twenty was challenging. We got through it. So, um, we need to try the same on the same path. You know, communicating as much as I can. You guys, if you've got anything, just let me know, please. Um, so, all right, um, get right into all the other appointments. So, I think you guys got the list in front of you.
We're gonna hire an attorney or we're gonna advertise.
Wanna do the attorney right now?
Well, I thought we'd advertise. No.
So, I don't care, wanna do attorney contracts? Oh, yeah, it's down there. Let's do attorney contract.
Oh, make a motion to retain Harold.
Second.
Motion second on the floor, so retain Harold. Through this contract. Any questions on it? No? Any other options? Dan Witten or like, uh?
No.
McLurk.
McLurk. All right, we'll do a roll call on approving this contract for Harold Harper. Yes, the rate is the same, that's correct?
It is the same, has, has been the last four or five years at least.
It's in there.
It's a discount, no, not bad.
And it's on the second page there, if you guys could see it. Do a roll call on approval.
Councilor Brickner.
Yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yeah.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Papera.
Yes.
Councilor Sten.
Yes.
Councilor Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilor Bozak.
Yes.
All right, Surveyor Agreement.
Thank you all. Make a motion to retain Kevin.
Second. Motion on the floor i- in a second to approve this agreement for the Surveyor. Any questions?
We do it yearly.
What's that?
It's a yearly contract.
It, it, it's, it's.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it.
It doesn't have a.
So, we say no to the agreement?
No.
Can we get a roll call on this Surveyor Agreement?
Councilor Graham.
Yeah.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Papera.
Yes.
Councilor Sten.
Yes.
Councilor Reavis.
Yes.
Councilor Bozak.
Yes.
And Councilor Brickner.
Yep.
All right, now we can get to the appointments. Um, so, first one on there is, uh, Warner County Redevelopment Commission. So, I think you guys got this. Uh, so the top, I think you guys, so the, the yellow highlighted are the people that served in twenty twenty, current appointment, it says it on the right side, so.
I recommend I will nominate, uh, Don, Don Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, a second on the motion to nominate Don. Um, Warner, Warner County Redevelopment Commission for one year.
Yep.
Is there any other nominations? Do a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Papera.
Yes.
Councilor Sten.
Yes.
Councilor Reavis.
Yes.
Councilor Bozak.
Yes.
Councilor Brickner.
Yep.
And Councilor Graham.
Yes.
All right, next one is the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, ABC Board.
I'll motion to Thomas Swihart.
A second, a second motion.
Motion and a second for Swihart, and there's no other applicants for that, for, I believe, an annual appointment. We get a roll call on Thomas Swihart.
Yes.
Councilor Sten.
Yes.
Councilor Reavis.
Yes.
Councilor Bozak.
Yep, yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yeah.
And Councilor Justin.
Yes. All right. BZA. I think we just had two applicants. Mike Young did not reapply, well, he was our current, so there's a Harrison Peterson and a Stephen Clausen.
I'll nominate, uh, Steve Clausen.
Present. Nomination on the floor for Stephen Clausen for the BZA.
Right.
Jeremy, the, and I should know the answer to this, but I don't, but he is not a member of the Plan Commission. I don't, I, no point in confirming that, okay, yeah. The, the, the statute requires that it can't be someone who's on the Plan Commission.
Has it?
Is that a problem or?
All right, is there, nomination on the floor, is there any other nominations for the BZA? Can we get a, a roll call for Stephen Clausen?
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Reavis.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Councilor Bozak.
Yes.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yes.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
And Councilor Papera.
Yes.
All right, Pita Bola for Warner County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Make a motion, we appoint the only applicant, Scott Williams.
Second.
Motion second on the floor for Scott Williams, who is our current appointment, I believe he's been on there for a number of years, so.
That's good, yeah.
We get a roll call for Scott Williams.
Councilor Reavis.
Yes.
Councilor Bozak.
Yes.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yeah.
There's no one.
Yes.
Councilor Papera.
Yes.
We started it.
Yes.
All right. Chesterston EDC.
I'll nominate Nick.
Nick?
Second.
Motion second, is anybody else applied? Do a roll call to approve that appointment, Madam Auditor.
Yes.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yes.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Papera.
Yes.
Councilor Sten.
Yes.
And Councilor Reavis.
Yes. Valmo EDC, I believe there's two, um, current positions filled by Pat McGinley.
I move that we approve Pat McGinley for reappointment.
Second.
Motion second on the floor, any other nominations? We get a roll call to reapprove Pat McGinley.
Councilor Brickner.
Yes.
Councilor Graham.
Yeah.
Councilor Justin.
Yes.
Councilor Papera.
Yes.
Councilor Sten.
Yes.
Councilor Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilor Graham.
Yes. All right, that goes to our citizens appointment. There was another one in there that it had, go ahead and take off so we can look into it, that was the Porter. We actually didn't appoint him until February, um, so we're gonna reach out, there's some.
Let me talk to him?
Yeah, and they're.
Isn't that the guy we just put on last year so they could have a meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
And then, but he didn't reapply, and then our letter was kinda weird from them, saying the first year's one year and then it becomes four years, but I think as an appointing authority, don't, would we be able to determine the length of the appointment or?
Well, I'd probably set by statute.
They, you said they set by statute or ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, however they spell it.
Just, why, all the other ones are one year, four, you know?
I, I would, I would, I would have to check, I would assume it's one year as well, but I would have, that's one, I would have to check, and I definitely have to do that.
Yeah, if you could check into that, and then, if you wanna reach out, then we can, we can take, take it up either at the end of the month or in February. Thank you. Okay, moving on, um, we got a council appointment. So, we got Community Corrections Advisory Council. So, um, that was Graham and Harper, and I'm not sure if, if that board's active, but.
Which one?
Community Corrections Advisory Board. Council appointment, I'm gonna guess by your reaction, no.
Which one?
So.
So, how does this, is this for anybody?
This is for us, these are council appointments, so if you're interested in something, yes.
I think I was on it.
Since I work for, uh.
I was on it.
Department of, uh, Community Corrections in Lake County.
Ooh, I'm, I'm seeing natural fit there, buddy. I nominate Mike.
I second that nomination.
There you go.
So, is it just gonna be Mike?
Hey, I would be, he'd be going there too.
Well, I think we had included Harold to go along, but I don't, I, I don't.
I swear I'm going down.
No, 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 I, I don't need to be on the, the, that board, I'm happy to serve if requested, but I absolutely don't need.
Well, we just started with Mike, and Mike is gonna reach out and see, you know, if active, non-active, for.
Sylvia wants to come on.
No, no, that's good.
You good with Mike?
Yep.
All right, Mike, we'll, we'll put you on there.
Mike and Harold.
Yeah, I mean, if, well, if Mike reaches out and sees if they're, if they're meeting, if they're gonna start to meet, and, and we feel the need to have Harold, you know, go with you, I think he's said more than welcome, but, yep.
Sounds good, thank you.
So, two Jeremys question, have, have they been active this year? This past year?
Were they active? They, not, not recently, but I presumably, a lot of that's because of COVID. Um, I do believe that they are still active.
Fair enough, yeah, okay. All right.
I've never heard that thing.
Dive in, Mike, and see where it goes.
Okay.
Uh, Nercy.
There's a good one, Mike.
My job, my job is not allowing, I gotta, I have a full time daytime job, so I can't be, uh, they just meet during the day.
I think that's one that, yeah, that's, meets during the day, and I think that those are long meetings, for a lot of people.
Four hours.
Wait, tell it, Jeremy.
Bob, you're, you're now retired, right?
I heard you.
All right, is that a motion?
Somebody wanted to jump up there and take part in the show.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, why are you retired, sir?
I'm back in that one.
All right, so, Bob?
Yeah.
All right. Bring us back a good report.
Yeah.
Anybody else, we good?
You know, that's four hours on a life you'll never get back, you know?
All right, uh, Plan Commission.
I'm Papera.
I'd like to stay on it.
I'll nominate Bob.
I'd second, well, if you need a motion.
I, yeah, I think we're okay, maybe we can just do a motion on all of them when we're done, you know, there are appointments, so. Anybody else? If Papera's staying on there, we good?
Yeah.
All right, Recycling and Waste District.
I'd like.
Sylvia, without that.
Everybody good with Sylvia staying on that?
Gotcha.
Okay. EMA.
Mm-hmm.
Had Graham and Sims.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with.
I gotta stay on that one.
I can do that.
You're interested in that, Sylvia, I mean.
I was gonna, I, oh.
Do you wanna stay? I, I don't, yeah, I mean, as long as we stay underneath a, a forum, you guys are going out there, I mean.
Actually, yeah, anybody can.
I mean.
It could be you, Mike.
If, if you three, I've got no problem extending that to three of you guys out there, so, um, yeah, Mike, that fits in.
I don't know if that, two means anything, is that?
Yes, it's.
Extrict to two?
I don't know. Um, who?
Maybe Joy put that in by mistake.
Joy, do you know why, I mean, it's not a board, right, Greg? I mean, it's.
No, it, it's, we, we meet in, uh, at the EMA building, and there's a whole bunch of people from various entities of the community, and even, uh, from Indiana Department of Transportation comes in there, so it's, it's about twenty-five people.
How often do you meet?
Five departments.
Uh, every three months.
So, I, I don't see why, why, the jury couldn't know.
Does the board vote?
Uh, technically, yes, but it's, it's all voice, you know, it's all, all those in favor, and it's very rarely anything where there's opposition, you know, it's just not set up that way.
It isn't controversial.
But what he's saying is if you send three people for two voting seats.
Yeah, it's not gonna sway one way or the other.
Joey says that we've had three before, so, well, let's go with, let's go with Greg, Sylvia, and Mike, so. Warner County Council on Aging, don't even, don't, nobody say it.
Sylvia?
I'll stay on that.
We gotta get, we gotta get that, you know, like.
All right, stick with that, um, Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, we've had Graham and, and Justin.
Yep, I'd like to stay on it.
I have, yeah.
Are they still meeting when, uh, representatives go?
That's a cool board.
Yeah.
So, and then Stormwater Advisory Board, I've, I've been on that for a little while since it started, um, and I'll stay unless somebody wants to jump in my way, so. All right, well, then we'll keep it as it is, um, let's just, let's get a roll call vote on, well, I'll just do voice vote, that's fine, just to approve them all at once. All in favor of all the appointments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so, all right, Harold, just kind of approving it, all right. E nine-one Policy Board, um, says President and Council.
Looks like it's you.
So, PC, um, Redevelopment, so that's President and Council. I'll stay there, so, well, where did that go on my agenda? Starting off with fifteen appointments, so, all right, flip back over, so now, we're all done with our, our council appointments? I miss anything? All right, so now just liaisons and.
Can we go, maybe go through and have the existing folks say if they want any changes, and then for the new folks to sign in wherever they, sign up for whatever they want.
All right.
Agreed.
So. All right, this is as active as you wanna be, give somebody for the department heads to reach out to, they got issues, so, do you guys all have the existing ones? Mike, you got an existing one, okay. So, jump in, you guys, if you wanna stay on there, or Mike or Andy, if you wanna jump in.
I'd like to, I'd, I'd like to stay on all that I am, and then be included in the prosecutor.
Okay, well, let's, let's go down. Adult Probation, it's Graham and Larson, so, you need to fill, somebody wanna jump in with Sylvia there, Adult Probation?
Sure.
Andy?
She wanted it, Mike.
Yeah.
Happy to help.
So, Andy?
Yeah.
We'll go with Sylvia and Andy, Adult Probation, Airport is Sims and Witten.
I really would love to be part of that airport. Have to go out there a little.
All right, so Sims and, um.
With it.
Andy, Sim, all right, Sims and Bozak. Animal Shelter, so it's Sims and Witten.
I'll, I'll jump on the Animal Shelter.
All right, so Sims.
You gotta bring dog treats.
And, uh, Sims and, um, Simpson.
Yeah, my.
Ant abuse, Graham and Sims.
Yeah.
I'll stay on it.
Keep it. Assessor, Graham and Reavis.
I'll stay on it.
I'll stay on it, I think. Auditor, we have Graham, Reavis, and Witten, I mean.
I'll stay on it.
I'll stay on it, um, we'll cross Dan out, we don't need three, I mean.
Oh, I'll be right there.
No, and I think a lot of that stuff you guys will filter, filter back to the council anyway.
Circuit Court, Justin, I think, well, you had, for all the courts, you had Justin and Witten, so, um, does anybody want to get involved with the courts with Mike?
Do they meet there?
No one else does, I can do it.
No, it's not, it's not.
No one else has an interest.
Commit to that.
Forty Court.
All right, so Jess, Justin and Sims, did I miss? So, for all the, all the career courts, there's Justin and Sims.
Do I need to bring treats to that, Mike?
Oh.
It probably would serve you well.
From India.
All right, Clerk, Graham and Larson and Reavis, I guess we can scratch out, uh, Larson, we can, I can just stay with Graham, that's all right. Commissioners, Justin, Papera, and Reavis, wanna keep it?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Convention and Recreation, Larson, Reavis, and Sims, scratch out Larson, if somebody wants to jump in there. Coroner, Justin and Sims.
Good for me.
Just speak up, guys, if there's something you wanna, interested, nine-one-one Public Safety, Graham, Reavis, and Sims.
Yep. I'll stay.
Election Board, Graham, Larson, and Reavis, we'll scratch Larson.
I'd like to be part of that if possible.
Put in, um.
I'll stay on it.
Andy, remember Bozak, that's fine, jump in, yeah, there's nothing. Emergency Management Agency, Graham, Larson, and Sims.
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah.
Uh, Jeremy, help you on that.
Yep, so, makes sense, we'll, we'll, uh, put Mike on there, so. Graham, Brickner, and Sims, Expo Center, Larson and Sims, scratch Larson.
Mm-hmm.
Um, anybody wanna join Sims in that?
Oh, I'll, I'll join. I'll see.
Feel like you're gonna get some weight this year.
Yeah, I'm gonna make some.
Run around for Sims in this county.
I'll be on the extension.
Uh, Extension, we've got Graham and Sims.
I'll be on it, yeah.
We'll keep it that way.
Yeah.
Facilities, Larson and Sims, we'll scratch Larson, we got Facilities. Do you need help with that? I'll ju, I'll jump in there.
Okay.
So, Reavis and Sims, Family Youth and Service Bureau, Justin and Reavis.
Yep.
Okay, Health Department, Graham, Sims, and Witten, scratch Witten.
I'll stay on it.
Highway, Graham, Larson, and Sims. Graham, Graham and Sims, you okay?
I'll take, I'll take Larson's spot if I could.
Highways, Graham, Papera, and Sims. Joy, you're writing this all the time, yes.
Yes, I guess.
Make sure we got to start over.
No, no, you're right.
HR, Graham and Justin.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, IT, Reavis and Sims. Forty Court, Justin and Witten.
Can I jump in on the IT stuff?
No.
Too late, we already.
Reavis, Sims, Sims and Bozak, IT.
Sorry.
Forty, it was, it's Justin and, who's joining you, Sims?
Sims, it should be Sims.
Yeah, we'll go with Sims on that, to stay with the courts.
Okay.
Jail Sheriff, Sheriff's Garage, Reavis, Sims, and Witten.
I'll be on it. Brickner will be.
We'll be on that.
We're good, okay, throw, um, Mike in there?
Yeah.
And the next one.
Juvenile Detention?
Yep.
Juvenile Probation, both?
I just thought it was on those.
Sure.
Just Justin is Mike.
Just got Justin on both, wanna jump in? I mean.
I thought I was intended to be for juvenile or something.
Juvenile, Detention and Probation.
Uh, sure.
Throw Mike in there?
Is, uh, Justin on there too, or is?
Yeah, I'm saying.
Mike and Mike?
Mike and Mike.
Got it.
You gonna run along with that, Andy, now?
For the Opera House, I will.
Gotcha. Opera House, Graham, Larson, Witten.
Whoa, somebody else is.
Yeah.
Sims?
Yeah, Maria, Graham, Lars, I mean, Graham and Sims, thank you. Museum, Graham and Sims.
Okay.
Opportunity Enterprise, Reavis, Sims, and Witten, scratch Witten. Parks, Graham, Justin, Larson.
I'll be on Parks.
Add Brickner, in Justin's place, on Parks. Plan Commission?
Larson, Justin's staying.
Did I say Justin? I'm sorry, Graham, back up, Parks is Graham, Justin, and Brickner, right?
Yep.
That's it. Plan Commission, Building Department, Paparrotta and Sims.
Yeah.
Forest Township Assessor, Reavis and Witten.
I'll jump on that with them.
That is not a law firm, so, um, add Bozak. Porter Stark, Graham and Witten.
I, I need to be on that one.
That makes sense.
Graham and...
Good call, Graham and Sims. Um, Print Shop, Sims.
Mm-hmm.
Prosecutor, Larson and Witten.
I'll jump on that.
Larson and Justin. Public Defender?
Whoa.
Whoa, sorry.
Larson. It's the Larson and Justin.
Prosecutor?
Did I write that down?
Justin.
And?
And Jeremy will jump in there with Mike. Public Defender, Larson and Reavis, scratch Larson, Reavis and, you want to play both sides of the coin, Mike, with me?
Sure.
Reavis and Justin. Recorder?
Not me.
I think I heard somebody...
I'll jump.
Oh, I'm good. Yeah, oh, no, I mean, I'm already on.
I'd like to help out with the recorder, too.
Yeah, you brought, was that, who brought that up earlier? Yeah, you did, so Sims and, uh, Sims and, uh, you said not you, Sylvia?
Um, it doesn't matter, if you need it, so is I.
We can go with two.
I've always been on it.
So, Sims and, Sims and Graham and...
Sims and Andy.
Sims and Andy, Sims and Bozak, all right. Recycling and Waste, Grahams and Sims?
Yeah.
Grahams. Graham and Sims. Soil and Water, Graham and Justin?
Yes, definitely.
Development, Stormwater, Management, Reavis?
I can, uh, uh...
I think that was because I said on the...
Good, you can have it.
You know, the, um, I mean, one of the members. Yeah.
I'm out of treats.
Soil, Soil and Water, Graham and Justin, oh, what shit, let me, sorry, I cussed. Surveyor, Graham and Reavis, bump back up. Treasure, Graham and Witten?
Fine.
Voter, Veteran Service, Larson and Witten, both are...
I can be on that.
Graham?
Witten isn't here anymore.
Graham and Reavis?
Yeah, I, I can jump on that one.
Graham, all right, Graham and Justin?
Yep.
Voter Veterans? Yes.
Yeah.
Graham and Justin, voter registration, um...
I can be on it. I don't think we have a, anything to do.
Would we just fold that into Election Board now, you know, and...
Yeah, we did.
Just have like, would just make sense, yeah, maybe we can just fold that in.
But, but isn't voter registration dealing with the, the two, you know, the co-directors versus the Election Board, which is more the clerk?
I guess Election Board works.
I mean, I'm just asking, I mean...
Yeah, all right.
If they're, just have...
We'll just do that, Graham and Reavis, we'll stay the same. Ways and Measures, Graham and Sims?
Yep.
Wildlife Management? Bozak.
I was on the Election Board, yeah.
Election Board, it was Graham, Reavis, and Bozak.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's fine, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, if you want to keep it the same.
For voter registration, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Graham, Reavis, and Bozak. Wait, what, Ways and Measures and Wildlife Management, Graham and Sims, did somebody say that we jumped in there?
Wildlife Management?
Throw Mike in, Wildlife Management.
Does that even exist anymore?
Maybe that's Zona.
I don't think it's...
Right, I thought it was Zona, no, no. I really thought it was two.
Yeah, that's...
It's been absorbed with the parks and lawn and tables.
I think, yeah.
Well, it's...
If it does, we'll be on it, but if it doesn't, I don't think it exists.
All right, just, let's take, let's, yeah, let's remove the Wildlife Management then, that doesn't make any sense. Is that it?
Yep.
All right, so you get us a fresh list, Joy, to get it out to, to us, and you'll send a letter to everybody that we appointed?
Yes.
Correct?
Man, you look like chicken scratch.
Everywhere there's a name.
All right, that takes care of all our, our citizens' self-appointments, our reorg. Um, Attorneys Report?
Nothing today, quiet.
Carry on the tradition of Dan would say, money well spent. So... No, yeah, 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 I'm, I'm not even sure, you know, like, disclose, disclose.
I didn't like that.
All right, um, so, encumbrances, we have, you guys have a list of 2020 encumbrances? Did it last year, Vicky, just, you want to run over what we're doing here real fast? Uh, if you want, hold there, yeah.
Hello.
How you doing?
Hello. Okay, this is the list of encumbrances that departments have submitted by our deadline in December.